Called order the city council recon session for City of East Grand Forks through Tuesday, June 9th, 2020 is now five o'clock. Would a city clerk please call roll, please?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel. Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Dale Helms. I see him. I believe he's muted.
He's muted.
Uh, Tim Riappell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
President.
Governor McCormick, number one, 2020 C project number three ADA improvements and bus shelter replacement. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so we received quotes, um, for the 2020 city project number three, um, project yesterday at one o'clock. Um, we did receive just one quote, which was from Op Construction. Um, we did send out plans and specs to three prospective contractors. Again, just received, um, the one, the one bid. Um, you can kind of see from the bid tabulations that I did provide you guys, um, prices did come in definitely higher than we anticipated, which I think a lot of it is just kind of due to timing of the project. Um, you know, the reason we didn't receive any other bids was just because of the contractor workload, just figured they couldn't get the project completed. Um, I know talking to Op Construction, um, you know, they're, they're busy. So, you know, probably reflective a little bit too of, you know, the, the higher bid amounts that we did receive. So, but with that, um, you know, the project was basically broke into three proposals. Um, proposal one included some ramp, ADA ramp construction around the new height school. Proposal two included some new sidewalk work and a new bus shelter pad, um, over on Third Avenue Northwest, um, just north of basically 10th Street or, yeah, just north of 10th Street. And then proposal three was for some sidewalk, um, replacement as well as some new sidewalk construction on River Road, um, just adjacent to the flood wall. So, this project was, was basically created to, um, kind of pick away at the city's ADA transition plan, um, and, and again, to show that we're making, um, you know, the necessary improvements that were laid out in that plan. Um, so this morning, um, Nancy, Ellis, Carla and I, um, kind of sat down, reviewed the bid results, um, you know, discussed what we, you know, may or may not want to do, kind of, you know, provide some type of, you know, recommendation, I guess, to you. And, um, you know, again, I did put in there that as far as funding, um, there is state aid maintenance dollars that, um, I think Carla had kind of anticipated that we could use. We do have a good fund balance, um, in that fund. And then in the general fund, um, Carla mentioned too, that there's some, um, you know, dedicated funds in there for capital projects and stuff. So, again, I, if, I guess, if you have any questions on that, I know Carla hopefully is on the line. Um, but with that, you know, kind of our thought this morning was, you know, numbers are high. So, you know, do we want to still try to, um, you know, do some work again to show progress on our transition plan? So, our thought this morning was, you know, maybe our recommendation would still be to try to do, uh, proposal one and proposal two. Um, you know, those projects, just with the ADA component and all of the requirements nowadays, um, you know, it does take, um, a contractor that's a little more trained in that type of work, you know, not just your everyday concrete contractor that does flat work. So, then our thought was, you know, proposal three, I think that was something that Reed had kind of wanted us to include in the bid. But, you know, that one is strictly pretty much just some, you know, sidewalk work, no ramps, nothing like that. So, you know, our thought, and Reed did kind of mention that he had even got some other pricing for that work and could do it, um, you know, probably quite a bit cheaper. So, I guess with that, I'll kind of open it up for, you know, questions, discussions, um, you know, but again, our, our thought after discussion with Nancy, Ellis and Carla this morning was maybe we look at trying to do proposal one and two.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Emery right now? I mean, looking through these, um, Steve, you know, just when we got the updated, um, numbers in the email here from Megan, I mean, was it about roughly $36, $37,000 more than the estimates? I'm looking at, or my, just by briefly just looking at them here.
Yeah, for proposal one and two, you know, we're probably, I was probably at about $70,000 roughly. Um, you know, with Ops bid for those two, we're probably around 90, you know, 99,000. So, you know, probably 29,000 higher. Um, now, that's always, always the challenging part a little bit too, when you do get just one quote from contractors. It's like, okay, are my numbers low or, you know, is the contractor's number is that high? Um, I did go back and look at some unit prices we'd received from our water main replacement project that we bid this winter. And, uh, you know, it seemed like my, my unit prices that I was using were, you know, pretty accurate from what we had seen from that project, um, which, you know, again, that's a water main job with, with some ADA work. But, um, you know, so it could be a combination, I think, a little bit of, you know, maybe my number's a little bit late. But, you know, again, I think Op Construction with their workload, um, you know, probably didn't sharpen their pencil either as much as, as, you know, they could have. And, and I wish we would have got more quotes, but, you know, the two other contractors I sent them to said they were busy. I'd even reached out to another contractor when we were sending out the bid package just to see if he would be interested. And, you know, he came back and said he, you know, just had too much work on his plate too. So, I think it's just a combination of, of timing and, and busy contractors right now.
I mean, I, I mean, you look at it and you look at the difference of, you know, a unit price of $8, they're using what, 15 and 16 for the sidewalk. I mean, that's large disparity in my mind, thinking why is that so high compared to what your estimates were? Is that where the, do you want to say the, well, we're going to charge you this because we're busy? I mean, is that, I don't know. I mean, what has everybody else saw, you know, with the concrete, I'm assuming, is it that more expensive now? I mean, within the timeframe of using $8 and now it's 15 or 16?
Well, again, when I, you know, when I looked at some of the unit prices we had received, um, you know, from the water main project that we bid, probably about January, um, you know, we were closer to that eight to $10 range on those prices. So, you know, again, um, you know, we don't have Op Construction on that project. Again, it is a little more of a specialty item. So, you know, we probably are going to pay a little more long run, even if we, you know, even if we were to rebid it. Um, you know, and even at this point, I mean, if the council decided we don't want to do anything, um, you know, I think our best bet would be just to hold it and, and put it out for bids or quotes again, you know, come December, January, because right now it's just too much, too much work out there.
Is this?
Enough interest.
Is this maybe due to the size of the project? That it's not a large scale and, or does that have some factor in it? That if it was in a, with other items, would it be maybe we get a better deal on pricing?
I mean, that's always, always a possibility. I mean, anytime you got a larger scale project, you are going to get more interest, more, you know, better prices. Um, like I said, I, I think a lot of it is just, is, is really timing. And, you know, even when Nancy and Carla and I talked this morning, you know, this was something we had decided this winter, we were gonna, you know, kind of set aside so much every year to try to do ADA work, again, try to work on our transition plan to show we're making progress on that. And, you know, by the time we identified the project, we were, we were able to get out after the snow melted and everything and kind of identify, you know, what ramps and stuff we wanted to do. Um, you know, it kind of ended up where we were, you know, now getting quotes in, you know, June, instead of maybe January, February when we'd be like to. So, you know, our thought this morning going forward too is, you know, knowing we're going to try to do some of this work every year, we'll, you know, try to identify any projects in the fall and develop plans and specs in the winter and, and get a bid in the winter where, you know, we just have a better chance of getting better prices.
So the bids on the proposals one, two and three, are they, let's say we go one and two, are they under the impression that these are going to be awarded per proposal? Or are they thinking that this is going to be all or none?
I did talk to Op Construction and they're, they're very flexible. Um, I mean, even if we decided, okay, we're just going to award proposal number one, I mean, they would be fine with that option. So, yeah, like I said, they, Op Construction said they would be willing to work with us on, on whatever kind of we wanted to do.
Mayor.
I look at the work that Op has done for the city over the years, and they've done very, very good work and have been very competitive. And so if they're coming in priced, and this is exactly why we have engineers' estimates, is, is for a moment like this where we have to ask ourselves, is, is this going to fit into our budget or not? And, um, so I look at the work Op has done, quality work, very affordable, always on time. Um, if they had to come in like this, I'm almost concerned that they're going to face some elements at the end, such as, um, end of season kind of stuff. And then you always worry, um, if it's going in a little bit late, is it going to be as durable as you'd like it to be? Kind of like what we've seen. And so, um, I'm a little hesitant in this moment where the contractors all say that they're busy. Um, I'm not sure we'll get the, the kind of timing that we're after. And, um, and in the long term, I'm not sure we'll be completely satisfied with the outcome. Um, so I guess I'm a little hesitant to go ahead with any of them, or maybe pick one, um, because whether it's the dollar or whether it's the end of season timing, it doesn't, doesn't feel quite right.
And I, just for your information, the way I set it up is I asked that the work on proposal one be completed by August 15th. Again, given the fact that all of those curb ramps were kind of around New Height School, I wanted to have that work completed before school started. And then I'd asked proposals two and three for that work to be completed by, I think that was like around September 15.
Yep.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Um, I guess I'd have to go along with the mayor. I think that, uh, we gotta be smart on what we do here. Um, I'd rather see us put it on hold and rebid it, uh, as Ms. Emery said, in December, January, something like that. Maybe get a little better price. That's all three projects.
Does anybody else have anything right now?
Uh,
Mr.?
I do have one thing. The other thing we have to worry about is they might get really busy and with this deadline that we're setting, uh, they might use a subcontractor that's probably not quite as good as they are. They've been known to do that in the past with a few of the other bids. So I'm, I'm more in the favor of caution that we just table it and rebid it at a later time for next spring.
Mr. President, um,
Mr. Murphy.
I don't mean to put Nancy on the spot here, but I was hoping maybe she can weigh in on this, because I know you had some concerns about the one, the bus shelter replacement.
Yeah, the, the bus shelter replacement was noted in the ADA transition plan. That's our top ranking. I've been waiting to move this one for a year or two, just to see where it would set out in that ADA transition plan. And I've asked Steve to do plans on this, I think it was a year ago, um, because I've been looking at moving this one for over a year. So, um, we've looked at addressing it with federal dollars, but when you use federal transit dollars, there's prevailing wages and a number of clauses, plus you run into Buy America and a few other things that really kind of, um, would make the project even more expensive and requires a lot more oversight. Um, so that's why the transit bus shelter was kind of held under this ADA transition plan, um, and the budget that Carla and I put in last year at 50 to 55,000. So I guess from my standpoint, if we're gonna hold off on it, then I need to notify Cities Area Transit and the, um, the bus shelter location movement on all of our maps. Um, you know, it makes it a little bit more difficult because last year we got the estimate done, and that was one of the projects that I was hoping to move forward this year as part of the budget process. So, um, understandably, I get that the price is quite a bit higher than what the estimate is. But, um, I do also have general funds that are set aside in my transit budget that we're not using because of the COVID dollars and the CARES Act that we receive. So, um, I would like to move forward on project two, but again, that's not, um, that's just something that I'm recommending. I, and I'm okay if you guys decide to wait and, and rebid it or re, request proposals in January. It just puts me in a little bit of a bind, so.
That's, you, you, you said that really nicely. I like that, Nancy. I mean, so you're looking at project number two that you want to move forward with, and that right now is 30,300, correct? That's the one we're looking at?
Yes, yeah. And that was our first ranked project in our ADA transition plan.
Would there be any interest in moving proposal number, number two forward and number one and three table and rebid them?
She was very nice about her request.
Mr. President, this is Mark Demers.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Emery, sorry if I missed it at the beginning. Was this, kind of have different words on here? Was this a bid or was this a quote?
It was quotes.
Those were quotes, okay?
Yeah.
I guess I'm not in favor of going forward with any quote that we only get one quote on. Um, I'd say go do some more work and bring back a couple more, see what we can do.
Yeah, like I, like I mentioned, Mark, we did send out the, you know, the bid package. We sent it out to three contractors, um, and just received the one, one quote. And I did contact another local contractor about, you know, if he was interested in, in receiving the bid package. And he just told me straight out, he was too busy. Don't even, don't even bother sending him, sending it to him. So.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? Seems like majority of people are wanting you to go back and get, rebid everything.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, that's fine. Um, you know, like I said, I, I think at this point, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go back out and rebid it, get, get quotes, I think it's in our, just our best interest to wait till early winter.
Okay, I guess that's the way we're going. Does somebody else has any input? See none. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, number two, consider Minnesota Department of Transportation Local Partnership Program. Mr. Emery.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Um, so the MINDOT Local Partnership Program, um, was created basically to provide, um, you know, statewide transportation partnership opportunities with, uh, local communities that have a, you know, a trunk highway system running through them. Um, and these, basically this program, um, you know, basically covers eligible construction costs, um, will cover construction staking, construction observation, um, you know, will not cover any costs associated with, with design. Um, so with that, um, you know, I, I did kind of discuss with Jason Stordahl, you know, the opportunity of this program and just if it was something we wanted to kind of go after. So, kind of discussed with him, you know, what some of my ideas were, and, you know, Jason liked the idea. So, I did basically, um, you know, put together kind of a, a package, sent it to MINDOT, um, and they came back and essentially, you know, approved what we had submitted. So, what we, uh, basically submitted was, um, on Demers Avenue between the Surly Bridge and Fourth Street, um, or Business Highway Two, what we would look at doing there is completing a mill and overlay, um, off of the Surly Bridge, kind of between the Surly Bridge and the, the flood wall there. And then basically, again, from the Surly Bridge all the way over to Fourth, um, all of the existing stamped concrete crosswalks, um, we would basically remove them, uh, replace them with just, you know, concrete pavement and then stripe them. Um, they were nice at the time that they were put in, but over the years, they've, you know, they've deteriorated and are, and are in really tough shape. And, and even at this time, with all the new ADA requirements, um, you know, MINDOT would not even recommend if we wanted to, um, you know, to put that stamped concrete back in there. So, and then also, um, kind of at the intersection of Fourth and Business Two, just on this, what I call the south side of that intersection on Business Two, there's about a 75-foot stretch there, um, that we'd look at doing a mill and overlay. And then on what I'm going to call like the west side of Business Two, between Demers Avenue and Third Avenue, um, we would look at replacing that sidewalk, um, brick pavers in that area. That's, you know, really in tough shape. So, so right now, um, basically we had estimated construction at about, you know, 215,555 dollars. And, um, you know, just using a percent of construction, um, you know, for plans and specs, staking inspection. Basically, MINDOT came back and said at, at this point, they would be willing to, um, fund 100% of the construction cost and the costs associated with any staking and inspections. So, you know, right now they've said they would fund up to 237,110.50. And then once we would receive bids, um, you know, they, you know, may adjust their number accordingly, um, to help, you know, fund that work. And then right now, I'm just showing, um, basically the balance of that work. You know, we could either use state aid allocation dollars, um, or, you know, basically we could just use our state aid maintenance funds too. That's, I think, discussion that, uh, probably have to have with, you know, even David and Carla, just see, you know, which, do we want to use our state aid allocation dollars or, you know, maintenance funds? But, you know, right now we're estimating that'd be about 53,889. So, so right now, um, you know, basically what I would be looking from the council for is if you're interested in moving on that project, you know, just basically getting authorization to prepare plans and specs. Um, I did talk to MINDOT this morning, um, given the current bids I just received. And these funds, um, are available basically in MINDOT's new fiscal year, which starts in July, July 1st, I believe. So, um, you know, essentially we could prepare plans and specs summer, late fall here, and then, uh, bid the project again, December, January, and, and do this construction next year, I think, you know, is, is again, probably our best bet. That's kind of where I'm at today. So I guess I'll open it up for any questions, I guess, you know, the council may have.
Mayor Gander.
I do agree with you that that stamped concrete in the crosswalks did not hold up as well as just flat concrete. I wonder, Steve, if they would allow us to take that out and come in with some tinted concrete to create a little contrast that would be just as durable as regular concrete? What do you think are the chances of that?
I, I think that's a, I think they would probably fund that, Mayor.
Maybe take a look, and if you're making a clean cut at, at just the crosswalks and taking out the stamp, um, I think that could look pretty good, unless anyone else feels differently.
But that's what Grand Forks has done. If you look at Demers, it looks good.
Yeah, I will.
Mr. President, this is Mark Demers.
Mr. Emery, do you have something before I go to Mr. Demers?
No, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Demers.
Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I guess I was going to ask the same thing as, as the mayor is, you know, I think if we can, those, as those pay, or the stamped concrete loses its functionality, it, it was a distinctive thing down there, and I think we want to try to maintain that as best we can. The other thing I was wondering, I want to ensure that the sidewalk pavers on Fourth Street, they will be, it says remove and replace. Is that with pavers or will that be regular sidewalk concrete?
No, I thought there we would still, um, we'd replace the pavers. Right now, those pavers are only probably like two feet wide. My thought was I'd probably go, say at least four feet wide with the pavers and then just narrow up the sidewalk a little bit. So, yeah, so yeah, we'd be putting.
And then once it was bid, would we have the final up or down if we want to move forward it after, say we, say we want to go forward with it, if it's bid, it comes back quite a bit higher, and they say they're only going to cover, you know, 50% of the overage, would we have the ability to say no at that time?
Yes. Yeah, do you guys allow the ultimate say if you want to award the project or not? And kind of for your information, I did ask MINDOT too, um, you know, if the city was not to do anything, when would, you know, MINDOT be looking at this? And, and basically right now, they told me they had just sat down and kind of looked at kind of a 10-year plan as far as projects and everything go, you know, let's say within the district, state. And right now, um, Demers Avenue wasn't even in their 10-year plan as far as any pavement preservation type of work like this. So, I mean, we all know, you know, there's no, no way we can go another 10-plus years. So, I think this is a good funding source and, you know, kind of could get everything cleaned up and kind of beautified downtown again next year then.
No, I think it's a great idea. I think, can you, I personally would say move forward and as long as, you indicated already, we have a final say on it, and we can address it once you get the bids, if you get them back in December, January. I think, why not?
Yep.
Anybody else have anything?
Mr. President, this is Ron.
Mr. Golstead.
I brought this up in the, uh, department head meeting, and my recollection serves me properly, the, uh, crosswalks that goes from Cabela's to the, uh, theater isn't actually a crosswalk. And there's a, unless Steve has cleared it, there's a, a, a good potential that would never be replaced. Um, so I'm not sure what the, uh, condition of the raised concrete is there, but that would, if that was eliminated, it would be probably cheaper. Or if they're willing to replace it, no harm nor no foul. But I think Steve indicated that, uh, MINDOT may not allow markings or a con, uh, or a crosswalk at that location because it's not a, an official crosswalk. I'll leave it up to you.
Yeah, thank you, Ron, for the reminder. Um, that is one thing that, uh, the district engineer did bring up is that, uh, the traffic, the traffic engineer within MINDOT may, may or may not allow that, that mid-block crossing again if we, if and when we redo these crosswalks. So that is a possibility that the one, yeah, between Cabela's and the mall, that one possibly would be eliminated as part of this project. But we don't have a final determination yet on that.
Let's fight to keep that, because that's a really nice linkage between our two anchors of our downtown, the movie theater and Cabela's, if we can preserve that. And that one's probably worth, uh, worth a little bit of a, of a tussle if it comes to that. I, I'd sure be willing to join in.
I would agree with you, Mayor, because I think even if we eliminate it, I would agree with you, Mayor, because I think even if we eliminate it, people are going to still, they're basically just going to jaywalk in and.
Yep.
So, so, yeah, I, like I said, we could, we could fight for it. Um, but I want to thank Ron for kind of reminding me of that, that the district did say that that one could possibly be eliminated or they would, may want to eliminate it.
Anybody else have anything at this time?
Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Helms.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to hear that we're looking at doing this, uh, bidding it this fall and doing it next year because the last thing we need to do is to cut off that lifeline for downtown businesses after all this going on. So I had talked to a couple of businesses today and they wanted me to put a word in and say, and they absolutely would not like to see that done this year. So I'm glad we're doing it this way.
Mr. Helms, I lost you there, so.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. I just said I'm glad that we're doing it this way, bidding it in the fall and doing it next year. I talked to a couple of businesses downtown and they absolutely, uh, kind of let me know that they do not want to cut that road off for any time at all, uh, this year with everything that's going on. So it's good that we're, we're thinking about it and doing it like this.
Anybody else have anything? All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Move on. Number three, review of results of survey for parking recreation facility planning. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I, I provided in the packet for you kind of the, the high level results of, of the survey that we had along with all the comments for it. Uh, and as promised in the RCA packet, uh, or the RCA, I, I said I would take a little deeper dive into some of the user groups they used, uh, or that filled out the survey and see how maybe specific user groups, uh, responses may differ from what the cumulative answer is. Um, so I'll run through those, but I think just to be in brief at the start here, um, what we see in the, the high level answer of the whole group is very similar to what we see when we break it down by user group. I think across the board, there are a couple of deviations from that, but in a lot of cases, uh, it is very similar. And I think paints, this paints a really good picture of the respondents we have, the 443 respondents of kind of where the priority levels may lie within our facility planning. So, um, with that, I hope that this can be a good document for us to use. Um, I'll just kind of run through some of the statistics I found and maybe some of my feelings towards them and then open it up for if anybody has any questions or thoughts towards our next step. So, uh, in total, 443 respondents, as I mentioned, 387 of those were from East Grand Forks. Um, I broke it down kind of by demographic of, of user group as well. Our ice sports group, uh, that would be the hockey, the figure skating, the recreational skaters. That made up 269 respondents. Um, I separated it as well by field sports, soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball, flag football. Uh, that had 222 responses. Uh, I think it's important to note though, as people were responding, they were able to select multiple demographics within the sports they play. So, um, if, for example, if a household has a hockey player and a softball player in it, they would, would have been able to check both boxes. So their answers may be duplicated in some cases with these numbers. Uh, indoor sports and other, uh, this one was kind of tough to figure out how to separate it. So we just kind of bulked them all together. Uh, indoor turf sports, wrestling, and then spectators, coaches and referees. Uh, there were 262 that fell within that demographic. And then the final one I wanted to separate to see just how their feelings may differ was, uh, the business sponsors and vendors. There were 52 businesses that responded within that group. Um, so the first questions we had, just a kind of the overlying response towards the sales tax, uh, we found that 53% of the total response said yes, they would support a 1% sales tax should that ever come up. Uh, and a, a much higher percentage than our first survey in March answered maybe to the question. Uh, 25% this time said maybe they would support it. That was a lot higher than our previous, uh, survey we ran in March. Uh, and I think that when you read the comments too, you're going to see that that's a consistent response from a lot of people is the wait and see approach. Uh, we did in the intro to this survey include that we knew the sales tax for 2020 was, was down the road, that that was not an option for us, uh, and that, uh, in, in light of everything that's had been going on and has been going on with COVID, that was explained. If people read the intro to the survey, that was explained. Um, so I think you see it, the wait and see approach to me is kind of twofold. It's one, let's wait and see what happens with COVID and with our local economy. But the other part of it, I think you see in the comment is a lot of a wait and see approach to what does the project look like? And under, understanding that we're surveying a large group of people and we're, this is a very broad-based survey with a lot of different projects potentially included. So I think a lot of people maybe, and I would agree 100% with that, is that let's wait and see what maybe our final plan looks like and what our project looks like before we start saying yes or no to any type of what the, the financial impact of that could be. So, um, I wasn't surprised by that answer by any means. Um, asking people how often they use our facilities, we found right now that, uh, six, almost 67% of the respondents said they use the facility at least one time a month. One time a month, multiple times a week, uh, one time a week, but, um, 67% in total said they used it at least one time a month. Of those, um, 35% said they felt they would use facilities more often if they were, had improvements done to them. Uh, and another 32% said maybe they would use the facilities more often. So again, uh, that 32% being a high number in the maybes, I feel like again, is kind of wanting to see what do the projects look like? What kind of improvements are we talking about to see whether or not it could be something that they'd be able to answer yes to that question on? Um, skipping from that, then we, we talked a little more specifically about ice arenas and the availability of ice year-round or as part of the year. And really the, the basis of wanting to have this question in the survey is kind of going back to the original feasibility study we had and the idea of connecting two rinks together at the north side at the Civic Center. Uh, and one of the things that we had included in that feasibility study was dehumidification and industrial sized refrigeration plant to get an idea, um, of whether or not the ability to have ice year-round or in the warmer ambient temperatures was something that we should consider in our planning and, and that was important to our residents. Uh, and I think just some of the answers maybe spells out that a little bit for us. 42% of people said yes, they would like to see ice available year-round. Um, and then even higher than that, 52% said that they'd like it for, for it to be available earlier and in the year. And in the question, I, I used the month of August as a starting date for that. Uh, so that one may be one, as we get into planning, we were going to want to, I would think maybe look closer at in, in how would that impacts what we do within the budget within the arenas. Um, but I think that in today's world, that would be an important one is the, the ability to at least look closely at how we want to use our ice and at what months of the year we want to use it for. Um, and then finally, before we get into the building specifics, the 68% of people answered that they would like to see East Grand Forks host more sports tournaments. Uh, and that that would, would be one that again, would fit within the line of some of the projects we've discussed with the initial feasibility study is, um, wanting to make sure that our facilities were at a, at a top notch, that, that people would want to come to East Grand Forks for the, the amenities we have and for the tournaments we can put on. Um, so with that, just then the next, the questions from there really went into kind of a, a facility by facility basis and answered, asked questions. Uh, the ball fields being the first one, I'll go through that one. We asked probably more questions than the others because we hadn't done as much homework on it previously in the feasibility study that was first put out. As we recall, that was really based on ice arenas and multipurpose facility and, and we didn't discuss ball fields at all. Uh, so we asked a couple of extra questions on that to get a feel from people on what they'd like to see. Um, the top rated one across all demographics was that improved drainage on the current grass fields was the most important thing and that renovated restrooms and concessions areas was second on all of those lists. Uh, and I really think the, the ball fields is a great, it's going to show kind of an underlying message from all the respondents in that, uh, it, it seems like the fixing our current facilities and improving upon our current facilities is the consensus answer that most people are going to want to see in how we go. Um, and our current economic situation with COVID, it'll probably play some part in that, but I also think it just really paints a picture of, uh, the request of our community. We hear it from people when we talk to them too about, uh, taking a responsible approach to fixing what we have and, and making the best out of we can of what we have across all these facilities. So that's one that to me was really, was really, uh, placed high was just on being able to improve our current grass fields, uh, as one that I think is an attainable goal for us to work towards. Of the list that, that I provided in the packet, the only one that is higher for the baseball softball user group than it is for the cumulative is the covered grandstand for spectator seating. That was sixth overall of the whole community and it moved up to fifth if I just sorted it by baseball and softball users. So, um, that, that's one that maybe is, could be a little higher there. The, the one thing I will add, if we want to look at that further is I didn't, wasn't able to sort it by just spectators alone. I didn't have that sort done and JLG Architects who helped us with this, they have the, the control to do it all. And I didn't ask for that request early enough to be able to get it as part of our, my stats for tonight. Um, moving through the baseball field then into the ice arenas, when, when I sort it by sport users, ice sport users within the ice arenas, the one thing that we see there is that from the total list, the locker rooms and the off-ice training or fitness spaces really rise higher into the list. Um, at the Civic Center, building accessibility, handrails, access to ice level is number one across everybody's list. Uh, second place moves up to more bigger locker rooms for the ice sport user groups. Uh, and third for those groups moves into space for off-ice training. The other in, nice thing or important thing to add is if, when we sorted just by our business community, our sponsors and our vendors, the last place, um, for the whole community is community rooms for group party, group meetings. For the business community that answered, that's second. It's the second most important for that demographic. So an interesting, I found an interesting rise in that. Um, again, just to point out, we see that in fifth place across all demographics, or fifth or last place was having the two ice rinks connected into the same facility. So, um, again, the VFW arena is largely the same, uh, that in repairing the roof leaks, the peeling paint, the drainage issues is the most important for everybody. Uh, all demographics agreed that the parking lot improvements and better access to both arenas from the parking lot was important. The Blue Line Arena was the same as well with, uh, hoping for warmer space for viewing, for more comfortable viewing. It's a cold building and that's one thing we hear a lot is people asking both from in-town and from out of town to want to see some improvements there. Um, and then again, the sightlines and the building aesthetics, kind of the interior things to make it feel a little more friendly was important to people. Touching on, uh, skipping to the multipurpose facility, the, the highest rated, uh, for all demographics was having year-round access to a space for jogging and walking in a temperature controlled facility. And I want to point out in that, when I asked the question, I, I wanted to be very direct in saying a temperature controlled facility, um, because I think that's maybe one of the underutilized portions of our current facilities. It's been growing in use, but I think it's still underutilized is the VFW arena with the new boiler system we had in there. We, we kept that at 52 degrees all year round this winter, which is very, in the winter months, when you go inside, that's very comfortable for walking or jogging laps. Uh, and I think with maybe a little more work put into that within our current facilities and more advertising towards that, potentially some way to allow access to the building more than just the hours of 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM when we're open for ice activities. That's, that could be something we could meet the need of people without having to have a whole building dedicated to, um, fitness, training and so forth. So it's, it's something that, uh, the temperature controlled part of that was one I wanted to make sure was included. Um, and then when we look at the field sports, the other sports, uh, access to indoor turf fit is third place for both of those. Um, the spring, summer seasonal access and the year-round access were almost identical in the scoring they got from a somewhat important, very important or extremely important. They were, they were almost identical, um, between third and fourth, fourth place. But the field sports did rank spring, summer access as third out of the, the two options. Uh, I think the only other thing that I want to add, just in high level comments before I open it to any questions on this is that going back to the Civic Center again, is if you look at this, you probably look at it and see that we didn't ask a question about ice plant at all in that question, whereas we did in the VFW arena. Uh, and we left that out for, for the largest reason is that we didn't want to include so many questions in the survey that it got to be something that people didn't want to complete. They were still able to complete the survey in three to five minutes, which was important to us and having people be able to get into it and, and take it seriously and give it their attention. Uh, and we know that those ice plants need to be replaced. That's the root of the entire project and kind of why we're having the discussion in the first place. So I left the question out for the survey as a point of, uh, I, I, I felt it was safe to say that the, the ice rink as I stand can't continue if we don't put that work into it. So I didn't, I felt we didn't need to ask the question. When it comes to the Civic Center, the VFW arena, I did ask the question in terms of do we replace the ice plant in an effort to have it remain an ice rink? Because the first feasibility study, remember, talked about not having it be an ice rink anymore. Uh, and that ranking came in in third, uh, in the list behind repairing the current building issues and the parking lot expansion. Um, but again, the, the scoring, if you look at it, is just decimal points behind the first two. Uh, so again, I think when you look at the projects as a whole and what we're going to have for a budget, we may see that rise to the top is that keeping the VFW as an ice rink might be something we need to consider, um, versus building a new building and so forth. Uh, so finally, I think I'll just open it up if anybody has any questions. If anybody has something that it may be breezed over too quickly that they want to see more of, I can certainly bring that information back to a future meeting. And then finally, if there's any direction from all of you on what you'd like to see us do next in our planning process. I mentioned at the last meeting that my hope would be that by the middle of July work session, to bring back some form of an amended master feasibility study, uh, that fits more within the budget that we had discussed at a 1% sales tax to get us started at least.
Anybody have any questions or guidance they want to give to Reed? I know that, um, I think as the months gone on, we feared and were pushed to realize that we're not going to have a vote with the citizens till 2022 now. Um, and I think that has given you some time to go step back and take a look at it and, and really look at what the needs are and what the, I guess, the, um, requests are from the citizens. And I mean, that was, I think was the biggest thing that we all want to make sure everybody has their input and have a, a spot in the discussion. And, um, you know, we can move forward now and tell everybody when we're looking at this thing, we don't have a 1% sales tax anymore for the pool. It's done with. Um, and it hopefully will be finalized and for the next couple of weeks, we'll say we're done with it totally.
It has to be sent and it has to end on a quarter. And it has, the Department of Revenue has to receive it, I think, 60-plus days before the end of that quarter. So I think the way it looks, it might end September 1st.
Okay. So, which is going to be, you know, good for us saying, hey, we, we paid this thing off early. We don't have it anymore. So we're not, um, adding on to it, um, which we weren't in the first place going to do that. But I think that's, you know, seeing some of the comments in there, you know, a few of them about having the pool sales tax on there and now you're going to add another one. Well, we won't. I mean, that's, I think one hurdle we're going to get over. But I think getting out there and talking to everybody and seeing people having different ideas and different ways of looking at it, you know, and you making an effort to look at different, um, aspects of sports or activities from families and whatever, um, I think is, is good to see and, you know, nice to, uh, have as much input as you did, which I think we're going to, it's going to keep growing. And, um, I appreciate the work you've, you've done on this and your staff and, um, I appreciate it. So, Mayor.
Um, thanks again, Reed. Um, through this whole process, what I've seen you do is really listen to everybody and that includes the baseball group, all the turf sports, the ice people and, and others in the community. You're talking about a walking and running facility with, you know, probably good lighting and a good surface and maybe expanded hours and, and you really want to make it. and you really want to make it um, available and and appealing for everybody in the community. And you want everyone to have their voice to it. So it ends up to be the the kind of project that the vast majority of people would prefer to have. I like that you're maximizing the the value of all of our current assets. You're not going to take something that still has good value and and just push it off to the side and throw it away and and try to start over and spend a pile of money that we would not have had to spend. I really sense that when it's done, every asset that we own is going to be put to its best and highest use. So um, I like the process that you're going through. And again, so everybody knows it really has been moved out into twenty twenty two at the soonest. That's even if the legislature can move on these tax proposals next year. We don't know what next year brings. And so we'll hang in there. And I know you're also working on a contingency plan to make sure that we can make ice in the interim between now and then. So I I believe you're on top of it and I just say keep up the good work.
Anybody else have any input?
Mr. Goldstead, this is Tim.
Repel.
I think we have to be cognizant of that that ice plant at V F W that we should probably start looking sooner than later to get that done. So I think that thing is ready to go anytime, right, Reed?
Yeah, there are, there are some components of it that I'm absolutely am worried about every time we try to restart the plant. I do have or I'm working towards on that topic, um, some potential replacement components of the the components of that plant that I would say I'm the most worried about. Uh, I don't have final numbers to put towards it, but you know, when we talk about replacing the entire plant and the floor, we're talking about a couple million dollar project. Um, I think there's some components. It doesn't answer our R twenty two question, so it's not a long term investment. When we, when I talk with the contractors about it, they call it a stranded investment. It's something that we know we could uh, we could put some money towards to help us in the short term to make sure we have ice, but uh, they wouldn't be reusable components whenever we replace the plant. So there's something that needs to be weighed with that, but we might be talking more about a hundred thousand dollars in in components to make our our staff sleep a little easier at night. Um, to keep that plant going for the next few years here. Rather than right now, if we start it and something goes out, we're we're on an emergency basis in a hurry, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Somebody else have any input at this time? None coming forth. I think what you're doing and you're looking, you you want direction and I'm not sure if you want us to say we need to look at this also or and or X, Y, Z, or A, B, C. I think you keeping the pulse of the community and talking with them and just like you're working on the project for the V F W, you know, looking at how much that's going to cost. And I think just getting in front of the community and keep talking to them, um, and then coming back, like you said, mid of July and us taking a look at that, I think that's, you know, with some of the aspects that you got from these surveys, I think that's going to maybe tell us more of what it's going to look like. Um, and maybe we'll, in from there till now, I think maybe if someone has a question, they can reach out to you. Um, so I mean, just keep, you know, if everybody keeps talking to the community and keeps telling them to reach out and make sure if you have something to say or you have a question on, please reach out to, you know, your office and, you know, you're going to be available to to walk through whatever they want to walk through, you know, and talk about. So I think that's what you still need to do.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Is he not? Thanks, Reed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, move on to number four, review of charter commission revisions. Mr. Murphy, I'll start with you, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands our timelines before you get going. Um, I just saw my email today, um, and Megan corrected me, which I appreciate that um, we have to have this to the state level by July seventh. And so my wish, um, last time we had work session, I know some people had some uh, uh, reasons they weren't able to go over what their thoughts were. Um, and I wanted to take this time today to make sure that we had ample opportunity to to bring up what you wanted to recommend or if you had questions on. Um, and my goal is not to make harsh decision or fast um, decisions on this because this is a important document for the city of East Grand Forks. And I don't think it needs to be taken lightly that we try to rush through this and give ample opportunity if something needs to be looked at as if it needs to go back to the commission, charter commission, that they have ample opportunity to do that and have their input. I know we have a couple of them on with us today also. Um, but I want to make sure that we're doing this correctly and that we as Mr. Gallsted indicated before, how many ways this could go forth in front of the citizens? And my goal and wish is that we have one document that goes in front of the citizens and not multiple. Um, so leave it with that. I'll send it over to Mr. Murphy and you can start out. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council President. Um, yes, like you mentioned, we do have, uh, it looks like we have two of the members of the Charter Commission, um, the volunteer members are here. Um, and we have had a chance to get that put out before you. Um, um, we will review the document one more time, you know, as far as any grammatical errors, um, misspellings, those type of things. Um, but before we get started, I would like to uh, thank Ms. O'Malley, um, Ms. Jacklich and Ms. Budge for the incredible amount of time they put into reviewing the um, grammatical errors, run on sentences. Um, um, run on paragraphs, um, everything that they did, they that they did clean up for us. So that is greatly appreciated that we have some people that uh, are well versed in um, and uh, the written English language to correct that for us. So I guess with that, um, was, I would like to turn it over to the Charter President, um, Mr. Beauchamp and Ms. O'Malley, if they have anything they would like to say. Otherwise, we will uh, take any questions or comments or um, suggestions that the council may have.
He's Punky's uh.
Yeah, where is he? Okay, you, we can hear you now, Punky.
Okay, very good. Well, at the last work session, I uh, made a presentation to the uh, council. And then didn't get too many questions at that point. Um, looks like I got my camera up here pretty close. The uh, we did did meet for, I'll repeat briefly, we uh, did this over a period of about sixteen months, generally an hour at a time, sometimes as long as an hour and a half. I think only two times we did not have a forum. Uh, we had a group that was pretty meticulous. Uh, we did our homework between the our monthly meetings and we went one chapter at a time. Um, we read through them. Uh, we wanted to basically understand exactly what the original framers had in mind. Um, and I, I think I repeated last time, uh, thank Mr. Murphy and Mr. Gallsted for leading us through the uh, state statutes also to make sure we're complying at all times. And um, I guess I don't have anything else. Aaron O'Malley, do you have anything you want to add? Aaron, can you hear me?
I can. I shook my head no, that that there isn't really anything to add to that, no.
Okay, very good. Well, is there anything from the council would like to ask me? I offered that last time. I'm here to answer any questions that I can.
Mr. President, this is Mark DeMurs.
Okay, Mark.
Hello. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, I'd just like to start off and say I at the last work session, I had to leave early. I had a hard out I had to get to, so I apologize to those people that were there and ready to present, um, that we didn't take it up then. Um, again, I'd take, I'd thank you guys for all the hard work that you did over the last many months. Um, it's painstaking. It's something that uh, I guess it's been a kind of a passion of mine that this get done for a long time. Um, so I I appreciate it and I appreciate all the hard work that went into it. Um, I'd like to say thank you or sorry to the council and Mr. Murphy for not getting anything to you sooner. Uh, I've kind of gone through half of it. I have a few handwritten notes that I'll ask and um, and we can move forward with that. The first thing I have is um, in section two oh one, um, the revisions. Um, this is just a petty thing. Um, revisions call for like a capitalization of mayor and council and then throughout the document, it kind of is hodgepodge whether capitalized or not. Um, I think they should all be capitalized. Like I said, that's the petty punctuation thing. Um, on the the end of the meat of it, um, in section two point oh three, the elective officers and elections. I I agree with the intent of what people are trying to do. I believe that the year is switched. Um, it says, I apologize, I'm reading in dark, so I don't glare everybody else. Um, but that the council members from even numbered wards and and at large council member and the mayor shall be elected in the presidential election year and even um, wards two and wards four, I believe, were elected in eighteen. Is that Dale, were you elected Dale and Tim, I believe, are two and four? I believe they were elected in eighteen. So that should be switched. I know I was elected in eighteen. Um, so maybe we want to take a look at those, make sure that that's correct. Before and then also, I don't know, mayor, if, I know that kind of ends up as a two year term for the mayor. And I'm I'm all in favor of that, I think. Not in favor of two year terms, but uh, but the idea that we even out the ballot, that we have an even number of of council members and mayor that get elected each year to minimize kind of a, the potential for a large turnover. Um, so that would be my items for two point oh three. Um, in section two point zero four, in a vacancy in office, um, I would like to clarify what before or after qualifying means in line one, two, three, four. Um, I think that the word before should be taken out. Um, if someone's convicted of felony when they're twenty years old, it shouldn't preclude them from being elected to an office when they're fifty five. Um, before is um, is too broad in my opinion. Um, let's see. Moving on. Um, I guess uh, in item two point zero five, office of mayor, um, I think it's my opinion that the um, that we should remove that the mayor shall appoint this chief of police and all police officers and mayor shall uh, prepare such regulations for the control of the police force and the powers and duties of the officer thereof as mayor shall be necessary in a like manner. And may, and manner may alter the same. I guess my understanding is, or my reason for taking that out is me, it's a antiquated uh, philosophy of how our city government works. Um, I think uh, we have a professional police force and we deserve and they deserve professional leadership, not that the our mayor isn't a professional, but it it's a political position. Um, I think that the regulation and and those types of things should come from people that have a working knowledge of that and they shouldn't be subject to the whims of of whoever's in a mayoral race. We can discuss that as necessary. Um, and then the only other question I have for those members of the Charter Commission, at this time, I've only come through half of it, um, is when you eliminated the the section in two point oh six, investigation of city affairs, you eliminate a line that says, and it may cause to be made any survey or research study of any subject of municipal concern. Is that because it's redundant with the investigations into the city's affairs or do, was there a specific reason for eliminating that? We can, that's about what I have for right now.
So Mark, do you want Mr., do you want Mr. Murphy or do you want Punky to go back through and say your two point oh one or two point oh three revisions and four and just kind of go back, address them, what you have right now? Who do you want these to be addressed by right now? Or Mr. Murphy, do you want to start? And then if Punky has the answer for it, great. Um, then go from there.
What I would prefer, that Mr. DeMurs puts all his concerns down in writing. And then when he has that done, he can notify Mr. Murphy and he can uh, try and arrange a meeting of the commission and we'll try and get this done as expediently as possible. And we can go through them one by one. And uh, I mean, this last one that you talked about, we did that so many months ago that, I mean, I don't even have a fresh recollection unless uh, Aaron O'Malley does. I mean, I don't.
No, it's it's very hard to remember what we talked about that long ago, so it so it would be nice to have a little bit of um, context and have everybody together to have a, the group remember it together.
And I think we could go through them relatively easy. It wouldn't take more than maybe one meeting, but at least if we had it down. I mean, we worked with a document and I think we worked with Mr. DeMurs's document. We could get this done pretty easy, but it's going to be very difficult tonight to get anything settled. And there is only two of us. It isn't fair that we speak for the whole group.
And and forgive me, um, Punky and Aaron, I did send an email indicating that I would like this to go back to the Charter Commission to have everybody meet and look at after what has been proposed or asked. Um, and then bring brought back to the council so that that was my intention or my ask of what we were going to do. So um.
Well, I think you, I don't think you missed any meetings, uh, Mr. President. Do you recall two point oh six?
No, I, and that's why I said I wanted them writing also so we could bring them back to the Charter Commission and go through them, so.
Great. I'm glad you're supporting us in that.
Um, I do have a concern, Ms. President, and uh, to the Charter Commission. Um, what if we end up with a little bit of a philosophical divide? And what if the Charter Commission comes back with one recommendation? Um, and we have Mr. DeMurs's concern and somewhere in there, we probably would want to hear from the full council. As for, again, on those divides where the Charter Commission feels one way and and the request of Mr. DeMurs might go the other way. Um, and then we would want to also give a little history. I do remember the conversation about the unique role that the mayor has with the police chief. Um, we know that all of our department heads come through the city administrator and then come to the council for policy direction. And by our charter, the chief of police is carved out in a special status with a direct report to the mayor. While the conversation we had at the level of the Charter Commission was, you know, as a day to day operation, he really does report to the city administrator for a lot of the the day to day decision making and whatnot. And so we did create kind of a hybrid. Mr. Gallsted, Mr. Murphy got together and created a bit of a hybrid which says that the mayor can delegate some of the day to day responsibilities and management to the city administrator who very ably handles those duties. But then on the larger issues and certain things according to the charter, that the mayor and the chief will have that unique relationship. Um, I know I have a feeling and I think the Charter Commission had the feeling that to have that accountability back to the people, you know, we're policing to the mayor, to the accountability, to the people that we serve. It's a good connection to have. A lot of cities have it, you know, big cities have it, medium sized and small cities have it. That special unique relationship between the mayor and the chief and out to the police. And so the hope was to preserve that and not just make a clean removal of that connection and over to the city administrator. But that there is a great connection to the city administrator, again, for day to day operations. Anyone else can weigh in on that that would like?
Can we have any response to mayor on that? I know that during that discussion, that was, you know, I think took up a lot of our time on one evening discussing that topic and I think it was um, very well um, gone through. I think Mr. Hedlund did have some input on that. did have some input on that also. Um, so I think that was talked about a lot, Mr. Demers. I think that was a, a, a thing that with the relationship that the city administrator does have on the day-to-day stuff was a good balance in leaving the mayor, having that, um, oversight was proper still. And I think that, like I said, it was, you know, discussed back and forth, the pros and cons. So I, I think that's what we came down with. Um, what's in front of you, I think everybody felt comfortable with that. Um, so.
Mr. President, it's Mike Headland.
Go ahead.
Chief.
Yes, I, I thank you, uh, for discussing this and, uh, I, I am comfortable with the hybrid. I, back when this was first being discussed, I did express my concerns. Uh, never had an issue with either of the mayors that I've had to work with, that, you know, that was a very significant issue. Uh, but it just because I do work so closely with the city administrator on a day-to-day basis, that was, that was my one concern with this and I'm, I'm comfortable with the hybrid that the committee has come up with.
Mr. President, this is Mark Demers.
Yes, sir.
Can you, maybe the, the copy that I have doesn't have that hybrid in it? Can you point out the language that delegates things to the city administrator?
Murphy, do you have that in front of you?
Uh, yeah, I have the document in front of me. I believe, um, that when we're talking about the hybrid and I can look this up. There is the portion of it that we left in the mayor and then when he, further down in the, um, and again, I'm kind of going off memory here, um, in the city administration portion of it. Um. I think it addresses it in there again, um, if I remember correctly. Um, I'm just read through that section here. Uh, maybe not, um.
And I guess part of my, my thinking is, is that yes, we expect a certain accountability of, or we expect a lot of, uh, accountability from the police chief, uh, and police force back to the community, but we expect that from every one of our departments. Um, I don't think there's, um, I don't see a reason why that should be vested in one person, um, rather than a council. Uh, I think, uh, you have more accountability when you're accountable to the council than you do one person thing. So, um, like I said, and again, it is like many of our positions, um, we have a, a professional police force, uh, that is, uh, sworn to protect and uphold the constitution laws of the state of Minnesota. Um, and frankly, I don't believe that a mayor, not this mayor or any other mayor, um, in specific, in particular, but any mayor, uh, especially a part-time mayor, has the, um, ability or um, their hand on the pulse of what those things are to, to stay on top of it. Um, like I said, I, this isn't anything in particular with our mayor. Uh, I hope, I know Mr. Mayor Gander and I have had this conversation obviously before. Um, and you know, I hope he knows that this isn't a personal attack on him. It's more a philosophical way we should, I believe that the council should be looking at how we, um, employ and regulate our, all of our employees, not just our police force. Um. I guess, and I would open it up to any discussion that the, the council has as well.
Any other council members have any comments to that? I know that, um, with this, I know you've had time to go through some of it, Mr. Demers, and I know that we are on a deadline, uh, that we need to follow. Um, and our next work session is the 23rd, and which doesn't leave us much time after that to the 7th, which will lead me into the process of saying, either A, we have to call a special meeting or we have to have a meeting on the fifth Tuesday, which would be the 30th. Um, just trying to lay some timelines. I like to have a deadline where you can get your information that you have questions on so that the charter commission can meet on it also. So that they're not making sure, they're not hastily going through it and going back and through them, okay, this is the reason why we went this way and bring it back. I think that's what we need to do to make sure that we are answering the questions that you have and the reasoning why they were done the way they were done in front of you, so. Does that make sense, Mr. Demers?
Sure. I, like I said, I apologize for not getting this stuff written out into you. I'm trying my best. It's a lot. I, like I said, the, the charter commission worked a long time on this. Um. Frankly, I've asked for updated, uh, intermediate copies, probably dating back into October, November. Uh, because I didn't want to get into this situation where we're jammed into a one-month period where the council could review, but, uh, but like I said, I, I apologize that I haven't gotten this into writing, but I will.
Mr. Murphy, when did you, when would you like it? That information by, so you can provide it to Punky then?
Um. Uh, realistically, I would need it by noon on, on Friday. That would be the, that would be the latest for us to get it.
This Friday?
Yes, yes, this Friday.
And it probably wouldn't be premature to set a date for the charter commission to reconvene? If we're going to have some things to consider?
Uh, y- y- yes, um, that'd be one thing. We'd have to check with their availability. I know we used to, we normally had them on Tuesdays um, after the regular council meetings, so that would, that would jump nicely for the 16th. Um, typically we met after the, them on the 16th.
Um, may I say something?
Aaron, go ahead.
Um. I, I'm looking back at, I'm looking back at old versions of this and the language, some, I think maybe the language in that section specifically about the police force didn't get changed in the most recent document. Can I read to you what the, what we had written? And maybe, um, Mark and Punky and, um, who else is there? David and, uh, well, everybody who's, comes to the commission meetings can tell me, um, if, if we change this afterward. Do you mind if I read it? Can I, I'll try to read it slowly?
Sure.
Yep.
So it said, "The mayor shall, uh, the mayor shall be the chief executive officer of the city. The mayor shall exercise all power and perform all duties conferred and imposed upon the mayor by this charter and by the ordinances of the city of East Grand Forks or the laws of the state of Minnesota. The mayor shall be recognized as the official head of the city for all ceremonial purposes by the courts for the service of civil processes and the governor for the purpose of martial law." And I'm not seeing some of this in here, so here's where it kind of changes. "The mayor shall study the operations of the city government and recommend to the council such changes and improvements as the mayor believes to be desirable. The mayor shall also report to the council any neglect, dereliction of duty, or waste on the part of any officer or department of the city. The mayor shall have control of and oversee its police force. The members of the police force shall be nominated by the mayor in accordance with civil service rules and regulations in effect at the time of the appointment. All appointments must be confirmed by the council." And then it talks about the mayor having no vote, but that part close to the end about the recommendation or the nomination is different than the language that we got in the last version.
And that was most likely then my fault. It must be something for with the, with the track changes, um, with the track, you know, because we, we had several revisions in, in these and, um, with the accepting and deleting of track changes as they went through, it's very likely that I maybe deleted that or overwrote.
Aaron, the copy that you read is not the copy that I have either.
I know, and I, so I, like, we've had multiple, honestly, you should see my stacks of papers here. We've had multiple versions of this and Mark, I believe that the one I read to you, um, reflects more of the hybrid structure with nominating and not appointing. I think, uh, I think that was the discussion we had. You might have been at that meeting and, um, Chief Headland was at the meeting. Is, does that sound more correct to you, Mr. Headland? Um, about the nomination part and approved by the council rather than appointed by the mayor?
Probably, um, it, it has been a long time, like you stated. I think, I think we met probably a year ago at least, so I, I honestly don't recall. I, I do remember that, uh, the feeling that I got anyway from that discussion was that the mayor would still largely be kind of essentially my, my old final oversight boss, but that certainly from day-to-day operations, uh, Mr. Murphy or whoever the city administrator would be, would be the person that I would report to on a daily basis. And I think that's what was the intention of, of this hybrid, as we're, as we're calling it.
Right. Mark, did the, did what I read reflect more of what you were thinking to or no?
Mark me or Mark Olson?
Yes. Oh, sorry, Mark you. Sorry, sorry. Yeah, Mark Demers, sorry.
Okay, thank you. I guess, um, having heard that, it sounds more in the line of what I was thinking. Um, my only concern with that type of hybrid issue is it kind of sets up a bit of a, uh, the chain of command end up, could end up, uh, kind of skewed with, with, if you're reporting to Murphy or the city administrator and to the mayor and the city administrator reports to the council, who are you, who really is the chain of command? That's my only worry about, something like that. And like I said, in 99% of time, uh, it's probably not an issue unless it's, except for that 1% of time and then it really becomes an issue. Um, that would be my only concern about.
Mr. Demers, I-
And I guess to my-
I would ask you to put those ideas right down on paper for everyone on the commission to see that. If you could do that.
And that, and that's fine. I, I, I'm fine with doing that, I guess, but maybe we need to get, make sure that we've got the most recent copy.
Yeah, Aaron, could you, uh-
It sounds like you guys have signed it on quite a bit of a different language than actually what's in the cop, in-
Yeah, Aaron, could you get me what you have there, that, that version as well? Because I, I, and I'll be, uh, like, um, either tonight or tomorrow morning if, if possible. Uh, I'm going to go through this with, um, city attorney Galstead as well. Um, looking at this here, it's the, and I, I apologize for this. It's, it, it, what I'm thinking happened is in the, the, the multiple versions of track changes, um, in here, in the, in that document, I must have overwritten something, um, or, or with a, with a save with some, with some of the track changes up there. So I want to make sure that I have this, this correct as well, so.
Well, and I believe that, um, it came from Mr. Galstead, so I'm wondering if there wasn't there one, one meeting you may have missed, so maybe you did miss the changes.
Oh, that could be too.
No.
Okay. Yes, if you could give me what you have and then I'll-
I just, I just sent it to you.
Okay, and then I'll go through that with, uh, Mr. Galstead. And so, uh, council member Demers, um, will get you the, the, you know, to all the council members as well, the correct version, um, probably right, right away tomorrow.
And I would ask, Mr. Murphy?
Mm-hmm.
I would ask that, uh, when you, uh, send out the new version to the, uh, commission, please make sure that it has bigger print.
Okay.
The one I got is like Pyta. I need a magnifying glass. Thank you.
Could you do that? Thank you, sir.
Okay, given that, uh, Mr. Murphy, you want to get that out to everyone and then we'll go from there? Anybody else have anything at this time regarding the charter?
Mr. President, this is Harms.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. I did submit earlier to Mr. Murphy my concern about eliminating section 6.14, so I just want to make sure that he passes that on. He did respond back that they, that he thought that was eliminated because it was redundant and other paragraphs. And I haven't been able to come up with where that is, so if I can just give some thoughts on what the commission was thinking when they eliminated that, that would probably alleviate my concerns.
Sure. And we can address that, that when we come back with everything else. If that's fine with you, Vedder?
All right. Almeyr, did you, it looked like you were going to say something? Did you have something?
Sorry. I, I think that we eliminated it because it was a state statute and we didn't need it in the charter because we have to follow the state statutes.
Well, we'll, 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 we'll check that to you. We'll get that, we'll get that to you.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Galstead, we'll get together, they'll send it out and then please, if you have any other questions or um, concerns, please make sure you get those to Mr. Murphy. And we'll go from there. All right?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Punky. Um, the mayor has one other thing he wants to go through and, um, if you guys, uh, give him a couple minutes, appreciate it.
Just hang in there for one more minute or two. And the timing's pretty good, Mr. Demers. Um. Do you think that you could trust someone who pledged the following oath? "On my honor, I will never betray my position, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve." Do you think you could trust that one? I do believe I could. How about this? Do you think you could trust someone who pledged this oath? "I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office for the city of East Grand Forks, county of Polk, state of Minnesota, according to the best of my ability, so help me God." Well, what I just read is from the oath of honor and the oath of office sworn by each of our police officers as they begin to serve. It is the promise that our police officers make every time they put on their uniforms and perform their duties. I find nothing objectionable about the oath of honor or the oath of office. In fact, I'm dedicating to living up to them myself. I'm in solidarity with our police officers as they serve according to these two oaths and I will oppose anyone who would seek to defame them. Any effort to dismantle or defund our police departments is a foolish attack on our constitution and our way of life. It is a defense of lawlessness and anarchy and it would put our citizens in great peril. I'll never be part of such an effort. I guarantee that every police department in America is founded on similar principles. In troubled areas of our nation, then, we need to tie back to these principles rather than dismantling police departments. To the 1% or so of police officers who do not subscribe to the standards laid out in the oath of honor, the oath of office, either get in line or find another career. But to the 99% plus who are committed to them, thank you for your service, for keeping our community safe and for making sure that we all behave ourselves. It is good for us to know that you are watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by re-appell. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.